Well, at seven o'clock, we will call this regularly scheduled meeting to order. I'm calling to order concurrently the meetings for the City of Victorville, the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Airport Authority, the Victorville Rail Authority, the Redevelopment Agency, the Water District, and the Library Board. All of those meetings are opened concurrently. Custom inhabit in this council as we begin every council meeting first with an invocation, and tonight that will be presented by Minister Robert Harper of the Burning Bush Baptist Church, and that will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be given by our Chief of Police, Captain Mark Taylor.
Thank you, sir. Father God, we just thank you this evening, Father God. Thank you for Mayor Terry Caldwell and his governing body. We just ask, Father God, that you continue to bless them as you bless this fine city of Victorville. We thank you for the growth, the prosperity, and also thank you for all blessings in the name of Jesus. We ask that you bless everyone in attendance with fine health, prosperity amongst their families and friends. We just thank you for this meeting and all the agendas that's going forth, and thank you for joining us in this meeting in the name of Jesus Christ, we pray. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under our, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
It's been a moment of the day, and we sometimes don't pay much attention to our hair, attention to our roots. Some of the people who have been instrumental in helping move the city of Victorville. That's kind of the purpose of my proclamation. But we just want to tell a couple of personal anecdotes about nothing better than honestly volunteering.
Only somebody like Terry Caldwell could stand up there and make those kind of presentations. How many cities do you have folks like that that have a sense of history just sitting in their presence? It's wonderful. Thank you. And I too, I've been here 36 years, I appreciate your light.
Okay, with that, we will go to the formal agendas. Item one on all of the agendas that I've mentioned: City Council, Redevelopment Agency, Airport Authority, Rail Authority, Water Agency, Library, you know what they are. Our public comment. Public comment is that opportunity afforded by state statute for anyone in the audience who wishes to address the council or any of the other entities that are represented here tonight. You can address us on any subject that is within our area of responsibility or jurisdiction. Because under public comment, we have no idea what you may say, as a general rule, we will not respond. We ask you to limit your remarks to three minutes. Please fill out one of these white cards and pass the card to the city clerk. That way we'll have the information necessary to be able to communicate with you should what you share with us require that we agendize an item, or give you information, or contact you to get additional information. And so I have several cards, and it appears that the first two are under public comment. And the first card I have is Linda Hardy. Linda Hardy?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I have two things that I wanted to comment on. Number one is, are there any plans to put parking markers along Civic in front of the courthouse? Because the parking is such that people take a car length and a half to park, leaving plenty of room to the other car when there could be three cars parked within those three, within that distance. I was just wondering if there were any plans to mark the street off for parking. There's nothing there right now, and people park as they want to. Number two is, you know my background, I watched your wonderful video that you have explaining the procedure for speaking in front of the council. However, if we have a deafened adult or a deaf, hard-of-hearing person here, they would not understand anything that's on the video. I'm not sure if you're using a screen, if you're using a large monitor or a TV, but may I suggest that we have that video captioned? I think that it is, it's really important that we get it captioned, because somebody coming in here, even if they're a deafened adult beyond, you know, because of the aging process, they may not be able to understand what's on the video. And I thank you.
For the city engineer and the Director of Public Works are in the audience, so I think they will probably respond to you about the striping that you're inquiring about. And we have the finest IT guy in captivity who's in the audience, and he'll respond to you on the captioning issue.
I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hardy. Dorothy Miller?
Mayor and council members, I was really disturbed last week when I set up an appointment with the city manager and two council members. One of the council members said he wouldn't attend.
Could you pull the microphone down and speak? Thank you.
One of the council members said he wouldn't attend because of possible violation of the Brown Act. I do not believe this to be true. I was told the city manager had a meeting at 9:00 a.m., and we were scheduled for a meeting at 10:00 a.m. The city manager did not show up at 10:00. And later, I talked to his staff, and they said I didn't confirm the meeting time. Why should I have to confirm the meeting time when staff set up the time? I don't, I do, I do want to thank the council member that did show up, as well as a staff member from engineering that worked with us to try to get the questions answered after 11 months. I hope this will get finished now and not get lost or buried somewhere. Also, I believe there are some staff people that do care about the people in Victorville, the people in Victorville are treated. This includes some council members. Remember, this is a people city, not a council and staff city. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. That's all the cards that I have requesting to speak under item one, public comment. Is there anyone else in the audience who had intended to address under public comment? I have your card, Netting, and it doesn't say, is that what you wanted under public comment? Then I'll ask and call Jackie Netting, Associate Builders and Contractors.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak before you this evening. My name is Jackie Netting, as you've said, and I'm the Government Affairs Director for the Associated Builders and Contractors Southern California Chapter. I represent hundreds of private, non-union contractor companies who specialize in public works. These companies are located in Orange, San Bernardino, and Riverside County. The owners of these companies pay prevailing wages and offer retirement plans that are portable from the first day on the job. Further, they provide full medical benefits at no charge for apprentices and at a minimal cost to skilled workmen. It has come to the attention of our members that the city of Victorville is being pressured by the California Unions for Reliable Energy to sign a project labor agreement with the union operatives. I understand that certain licensing related to the power plant you are seeking to build is being delayed by the actions of this union cooperative. This is the same group and the same method Kier employed in the city of Riverside, but Riverside eventually triumphed in maintaining a fair bidding and working environment. In speaking with city staff and developers who will be working on the power plant, I have asked what the city intends to do regarding this power play. The response back to me is, "We intend to do what is in the best interest of the citizens of Victorville." I would like to respond to that with the flyers I have distributed, and would ask the council members to keep in mind that ABC is also interested in the best for the citizens of Victorville. You will see from the handout that in California, only 17% of the private construction workforce is union. On the second page, you will see that nationally, only 14% of the private construction workforce is union. This means that in California, 83% of the private construction workforce is non-union or a merit shop. When a project labor agreement is put in place, non-union contractors will not bid on it. This means if you put a PLA in place, you will only have 14% of the contractors bidding on your projects. The reason is because under the terms of the agreement, the non-union contractors must pay union dues and must send the majority of their workforce through union hiring halls in hopes that the same workforce they rely on is returned to them. This seldom happens. Further, non-union contractors are put at a disadvantage in winning these bids, as they are forced to pay double medical benefits, once to their private providers and once to union plans, and double pay retirement benefits, once to the 401Ks they carry ongoing for their employees, and once to the union trust plans which will not be received by the employees unless they remain with the union for at least five years. Further, project labor agreements in themselves have been known to increase the cost of construction by an average of 20%. This is why President Bush has banned project labor agreements on projects funded using even $1 federal money. As a large percentage of Victorville residents are employed in non-union private construction companies, they should be allowed equal access to local jobs the city will be providing via construction on the power plant, as well as the Southern California Logistics Center. Make no mistake, once the city signs a PLA on the power plant, the union operatives will hold the gun at your head once again. The citizens of Victorville should not have their tax dollars funneled into union treasuries via a project labor agreement, and if every person working on a power plant is required to be a member of a union, that is exactly what you're doing. In the words of former President Ronald Reagan, "To sit back hoping that someday, some way, someone will make things right is to go on feeding the crocodile, hoping he will eat you last, but eat you he will." Thank you.
You. Again, that's the last card I have under public comment. Does anybody else intend to address the council or any of the other entities under public comment? Not, then we will conclude item one and move to the Library Board. I'll turn that over to Hunter, who is our liaison with the Library Board. Mr. Hunter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The only item on the agenda is revisions. If we had no revisions, there's nothing else on the agenda.
You will go to the Rail Authority. There are no revisions to the Rail Authority that I am aware of. There is an addendum for Airport Authority, and we usually take these together, but anyway, we'll, if there's nothing else to add to the Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority?
Nothing to add.
Then we will go to the Airport Authority. We do have an addendum, and an addendum to the addendum, it looks like, for the Airport Authority. And item three is a request to enter into a one-year agreement with Guy Fox and Associates for consulting services related to the marketing of air cargo opportunities at SCLA. Total amount of the contract, $60,000. Questions or comments? Not a motion would be in order?
Second.
Moved in second, and may we vote?
Hunter? Hunter, I'm missing a vote. You?
Unanimous. Item four is a request order to contract to TRC Solutions for design of the SCLA security upgrade, project phase one, for $175,263, and approve an additional appropriation of $95,263. Questions or comments from members of the Airport Authority?
Move for approval?
Second.
Moved in second, and may we vote? Anamis. And we have an addendum, and an addendum revision, both dealing with proposed SCLA resolution 08007, which if adopted, would approve an exclusive negotiating agreement for development of real property bound between SCLA, KND Affiliates LLC, and East Valley Land Company LLC. Questions or comments from members of the authority?
Mayor Caldwell, I would also add that this has a resolution approving the agreement as revised. We'd like to add one other provision that would be added to the agreement that would be included in your motion, and that is that the agreement provide that it could be terminated by the authority at any time prior to the three-year term, to the extent that the authority compensates the developer for all costs incurred up to that point.
A move the item?
For a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, and may we vote? Anamis? We'll now go to the Development Agency agenda. Item three is the consent calendar. The items on a consent calendar have been predetermined to be routine, non-controversial, to be adopted with one motion unless there's a request for removal. Second, and may we vote? That concludes the Development Agency agenda. We now go to the Water District agenda. Item three is a request to approve a contract to DDH Apple Valley Construction for construction of well number 41 to the Balsam Arsenic Plant Water Pipeline in the amount of $2,504,700. Questions or comments? Is there a second?
Second.
And moved in second, and may we vote? Includes the Water District agenda. We will now go to the City Council agenda. There's an addendum to the City Council agenda that we'll deal with when we get to the item. Item three is a public hearing. Call to hear arguments for or against accepting the offer of compensation for Forest Park. And we also have this revision which deals with the staff report and the closure of Forest Park. Public hearing item, but before I open the public hearing, are there questions or comments from members of the city council? Not, I'll open the public hearing. I'll invite anyone in the audience who wishes to be heard for or against, pro or con, on the issue of closure of Forest Park. Anyone who wishes to be heard. Hearing no testimony, I'll close the public hearing. Council, a motion would be in order?
Move the item?
Second.
Second, and may we vote? Unanimous. Agenda item four is the consent calendar. Again, these items have been predetermined to be routine and non-controversial. They will be adopted with one motion unless there's a request for an item to be removed. Second? Second, and may we vote? Anamis. Item five is a request to adopt proposed resolution number 08062, which if adopted, would authorize the city clerk to destroy certain records pertaining to the Victorville Water District. Questions or comments?
Second.
Seconded, and may we vote? Anamis. Item six is proposed resolution 08033, again, which if adopted, would deal with the vacation or abandonment of a portion of Demeron Road. Questions or comments?
For approval?
Seconded, and may we vote? Anamis. We'll deal with items seven and eight concurrently. Proposed resolutions 08060 and 08061, they deal with the security grants for the Victorville Police Department and Heat Belt Enforcement Traffic Safety Project. They're all related to law enforcement issues. Questions or comments from members of the council?
Second.
Both items, seven and eight?
Yes.
Moved and seconded to approve items seven and eight. May we vote? Anamis. Item nine, request to approve the amended cooperative agreement between the City of Victorville and the State of California for the High Desert Corridor Project, District Agreement Number Eight, 1214 AV1, and authorize the mayor to execute the agreement.
Approval?
Vote? Unanimous. Item 10, request to allocate $1,071,620 in CBBG and $343,559 in home funds for fiscal year 0809 Housing and Community Development HCD grant funds. Questions or comments from members of the council?
Move the item?
Vote? Unanimous. Item 11, proposed resolution number 08063, which if adopted, would authorize the staff and the city clerk to take the necessary steps to hold a special election on Tuesday, June 3, 2008, consolidated with the state primary election, and it would deal with the issue of converting from general law city to charter city.
Move the item?
Anamis. Agenda item 12 is presentation of a request to discuss and take a possible action concerning the closure of the Victorville Juvenile Court. This item is on at my request, and I would urge the council to seriously consider adopting a formal position in opposing the recently announced decision by the presiding judge of San Bernardino County to close the Victorville Juvenile Court and move it to San Bernardino. Reasons that I would urge us to oppose it, and I'm going to start in reverse order. Start with the program that we participated in at 4:30 today. Councilman Hunter has been instrumental in getting a $400,000 grant for the U-turn program. Every professional that any of us have ever talked to realized that the intervention and the prevention is our real, really our only hope of dealing with juvenile delinquency, which leads to gangs and which leads to troubled life. One of the things that we're doing is spending a ton of money on SMASH units, gang enforcement, school resource officers, after-school programs. I don't know whether anybody in our staff could quantify the amount of money that we're spending annually to try and deal with the juvenile delinquency and gang problem in our community, but I think if the number were quantified, it would be staggering. Some of the statistics that we hear is that a lot of these children that are troubled come from broken homes, homes with a single parent. It's hard enough for the single parent to take time off work to accompany their child to juvenile court, which is a requirement. Imagine the hardship to take the whole day off so that they could travel to San Bernardino. It is something that is cost prohibitive. And you consider that, I bought gas earlier this week, paid over $3.40 a gallon. How does a single parent on a shoestring budget afford a half a tank of gas to go to juvenile court, and usually it's multiple trips before the matter is resolved? We pay a lot of money to have school resource officers, and yet they would be required to leave the campus and go sit in the courthouse in San Bernardino waiting for the case to be called. What a terrible waste of time and money and expertise. The cops that are out there trying to get the bad people off the streets, just like the school resource officer, would have to go off-duty, go to San Bernardino, and sit and wait for the case to be called. and wait for the case to be called. That's downtime for them, and probably backfill time for somebody on an overtime basis. I submit to you that it is a slap in the face of the entire desert, not just the city of Victorville, for them to even talk about closing the juvenile court. If you read the article in the Daily Press, you will know that neither the sheriff's department or the district attorney's office support this move to close the juvenile court and send it to San Bernardino. I think this council owes it to the city, to the citizens, the 105,000 people we represent, to stand up with the sheriff, and with the district attorney, and with the volunteer programs of intervention and other activities designed to work with our young people, and tell the presiding judge he's got to find another way. Now, I spend a lot of my time in the courthouse, and not at all wanting to demean the motives of the presiding judge of this county. I've known Judge Maguire since he was appointed to the bench. In fact, I was involved with that process. I think he just simply is misguided. I think he has no real appreciation for what's going on in the desert, and specifically Victorville, because he doesn't live here. And he doesn't sit in the courtroom up here. His very first assignment was in Victorville, probably 18 or 20 years ago, and that was a very limited assignment, because he was in Centsumirongo. I told the district attorney of this county today that it was my intent to introduce this proposition to the council tonight, and although I obviously can't guarantee it, I also told him that I would be very, very disappointed if we didn't have a unanimous council on this particular issue of opposing forcefully and in writing the closure of the juvenile court. I think there are alternatives. Argument that you will get is, well, you have to have a secure facility. And for the average person attending court, I don't disagree with that. If you're going there for a criminal matter, or a domestic violence matter, or a family law matter, yep, emotions run high, and you need armed deputies at every place in the courtroom and in the hallway. The argument in the paper also said that what they want to do is they want to get another courtroom for small claims actions and traffic. I don't think you need the level of security for small claims and for traffic matters. They can go right across the street from the courthouse. There's a lot of commercial space that's available that would be perfectly adequate for small claims and traffic. Leave the juvenile court facility where it's at, and if you're struggling for space, which I know they are, and there's budget constraints, burden not to be placed on the local community, and especially on the disadvantaged members of the community who can't afford to journey to San Bernardino. So my request to this council is to authorize the city council and staff to prepare a resolution in strong opposition, immediately forward it to the presiding judge and all of the judges of this county, and be prepared to defend that decision.
Your intention to list in the resolution all the items you just placed as for the reasons, include those in the resolution, too?
It is, and I did mention that to the district attorney today, and said that somebody from our staff, probably our public information officer, would be contacting them to make sure that we had the statistics and the facts correct in the document, and they are perfectly willing to do that. And in fact, they thanked me, anticipation that the city of Victorville would stand up and be counted on this issue.
Would it be your intentions also to copy that resolution to the governor and our legislators?
Absolutely, and to the board of supervisors.
Is that your motion?
We also have our... We have to have them. We've got to get them to join. This is not just a Victorville issue, this is a Victor Valley, High Desert issue. Yes, that is my motion.
I'm in a second.
Questions or comments on the motion?
Yeah, one comment. I think one of the things we've got to recognize here is there's budget problems in the state, and Senator Renner pointed out a very astute and obvious fact that seems to be lost on state legislators a lot of times, that every program isn't equal. To make an idea of saying, gee, we've got a financial crisis, even though it was self-inflicted, and then to say you're going to mitigate it by cutting it equally 10% across the board is a foolish idea. And that drops right down into a decision like this within the county justice system here as well. Every program is not of equal value, and as Mayor Caldwell pointed out, some of the things that we do can be done in actually a more cost-effective way, because the program doesn't require that kind of sensitivity and that kind of strength to it, and spending. So, the idea that you mitigate a problem simply the easiest way by moving all the pieces to another spot is foolish. And this resolution, I hope, we, the whole High Desert supports it. I believe they probably, you'll have every council member in every city supporting this. But I hope the message is clear that these programs, especially programs within the youth arena of the legal system, they have to be protected, they have to be perpetuated, and in fact, they have to grow if we're going to mitigate the other part, other flip side of that, the gang issues and all the other stuff. This is the wonderful front-end part of this thing, and I support the motion as well.
Anybody else? May we vote? Was my motion, we need a second? I think Mr. Hunter seconded.
I did, yep. You got to first, push your first. He doesn't first very often.
May we vote? Anamis. With that, then, I would ask that Mr. Robertson struck Ms. Hester to contact Dennis Christie and Gary Roth in the district attorney's office tomorrow, so that we can get this thing put together as quickly as possible, and perhaps contact your counterparts in the town of Apple Valley, City of Sperry in Adelanto, and urge them to consider doing... Okay, last item for 13, presentation of reports from council members. Councilman Gabriel Alas?
The only thing I have is, for those of you wearing it here at 4:30, the state of California awarded the city a grant of almost $400,000 for our U-turn program, which is to keep youth out of gangs. So it's an outstanding opportunity for us.
The only item I have is the long overdue decision by Mr. Gargan to tear down the welcome sign. I had no idea how much grief that was going to cause, but I have a bright ray of hope in that, in discussing this with Mr. Hinojo, who's on the planning commission, that he and his fellow planning commissioners would be willing to work with our staff to get another sign up, hopefully in that general area. With budget constraints, that may be something that will take some time, but I was surprised at the amount of interest expressed in that rickety old 40-year-old sign, but never know. So what I thought was going to be really something that everybody would be happy about turns out that there's a segment of the population, and some of them are very vocal. Doris Davies is burning my telephone up at home. So, Mr. Gargan, I would appreciate you moving expeditiously to get a sign up that has the approval of Doris Davies and the San Bernardino County Fair. Get her off my back. We have no closed session items, and so unless there's something else to bring before the House, the council meeting stands adjourned.